My name is Brian Hawkins. I'm on the board of the DPPA and also Matt Douglas is on the board as well. We're going to sort of be the facilitators of our forum. Just a quick overview of our format. Each candidate is going to have approximately two minutes to introduce themselves. And then, once that introduction's complete, we're going to go through a series of questions that we're submitting. Each candidate's going to have a minute and a half to answer the questions. And we'll try to start out maybe at this time and work our way through so not the same person will get stuck answering the question the first time, vice versa, being the last as well. And then, in closing, at the end, each candidate's going to have about 60 seconds or a minute to have any closing statements or any follow-ups to anything they may have left untied during their presentation. So with that being said, I guess we'll turn it over for the introductions. Alicia Ammons is going to be the timekeeper. She's right here in the front row. She has little signs to give you a warning. We're trying to keep on track. We do actually have a pretty good amount of questions, so if we could stay with our time constraints so we can make it through as many questions as possible. And with that being said, this wasn't pre-planned, but I was going to go from left to right, so if Matt, if you would start with your, just your two-minute introduction, and then we'll just go down the line with each candidate.
Yes, please use the microphone. Ziggy P is recording this and will play it back again, as Jason will tell us at the end, so please use the microphone, so you'll come through on the radio.
This is Ron Knapp. Can you hear in the back?
My name is Pauline Mackwork Jr. I'm a candidate for Real Exeter City Council, Seat 1. I listed some qualifications that I think are pertinent to this office. I've got 40-plus years in accounting profession. I'm married to the same woman for 37 years, and we have three sons, ages 35, 32, and 30. I don't know what you'll win with that, but I have 40-plus years in private business. I own a free business, I sold one for a profit, and still operate the other two. Last 16 years of my professional career, I was in administration, serving as principal, assistant principal, transportation coordinator, and then transportation director. I managed 115 employees plus a $12 million budget. I ranked in the top 10 for cost-effective transportation in the state of Florida for eight of 11 years. I've served on the city council for several terms. Please reelect me on August 14th so we can keep moving to Daphneak Springs, Florida. Thank you for your time.
I want to thank the DPPA for all the grief that's been grieved by the city of Daphneak and for scheduling this forum. I want to thank each of you for coming out tonight, giving us the family time, and missing midweek church events in order to be more informed. I am Jenny Griffith, a lifelong resident of Walton County and a 1973 graduate of Walton City Hospital. I am a financial secretary of the Dartington United Methodist Church, where I am a member and have attended church for the past 20 years. I have one daughter, Candice Way, who graduated from Paxton High School and now resides in Fort Worth, Alabama. My father, stepmother, sisters, nieces, uncles, aunts, and cousins live in Daphneak Springs. I've been employed with Walton County School District since 1989. During my employment with the school district, I acquired knowledge on budget preparation and management, leadership skills, and customer relations. I have also learned firsthand the value of mutual respect for coworkers and public effective teamwork in the course of good staff morale. I want to see the Daphneak Springs grow while preserving our rich history. To grow, we need to bring new businesses and industries. As the Daphneak Springs County Board Member since 2012 and current chairperson, I am committed to seeing our community grow in a balanced and thoughtful way. I have closely observed the process of the recent study conducted by the Institute for Senior Professionals, and I completely agree with the outcomes of their analysis. Another aspect of economic growth for... My camera. No, she should... She doesn't know. See what they did to you? Okay. Another aspect of economic growth for Daphneak Springs includes the opportunity for increased tourism. I was involved with Christmas Reflections when it began. In this annual event, along with Florida Chattoque family and newer events such as Marvel Flight, have done much to bring regional and national recognition to our city. I was a member of the Daphneak Springs Special Events Committee from November 2011 through January 2015, serving as chairperson for 18 months. I am involved in Energy Expo and Marvel Flight event, and presently serving as event coordinator for Marvel Flight. I believe that the events and activities generated by the Special Events Committee and other community groups bring much-needed recognition to our community. Are you sure this is...
I'm sure.
Okay. I'll pass it on then. Thank you.
Hello, Scotty. My name is Kermit Wright. I was born February 24th, 1947, at Lake Side Hospital up here on the circle. So I've lived all the way. In my professional career, I was for postal service for 37 and a half years. I made it to the rank of postal master four different times. Whenever I retired, I was privileged to work with the Arc of Walton County as the executive director. And I received a bigger blessing from that than all my years of post office. Then, I went crazy and decided to run for city council. And I asked your prayers upon me as I undertake this campaign and to serve you again. Well, it's that time again. Please look for an elect real there. Kermit Wright, you're candidate for Daphneak Springs City Council, Seat 2. Together, we have accomplished so much over the last four years and have so much to look forward to. Probably improvements made in our infrastructure to the new sign ordinance. Every one of us have benefited from our efforts. I thoroughly enjoyed working with you and standing up to many challenges that you have brought my attention, and we have solved together, making Daphneak Springs a better place to live, about our downtown area. Although we have a long way to go, I'm so very proud of the improvements that we've made and the new businesses that we have. About the many new activities around the lake yard, at the airport, throughout our city, almost every weekend, there's something happening that entertains our families. I hope that you're as happy as I am and look forward to what we can do together over the next four years. Your vote, continued support, is appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. My name is Reed Nolan, and I'm City Council, Seat Number 2, with Dr. Falwell. I had a bet that I was going to speak after him, actually, so you won that $10 commercial. He didn't show up. But I want to thank the Department of Professional Business and Regulation for having us out here to speak, the refreshments, and Ms. Sarah Commander for, you know, being a gracious host. Well, the song is pretty much remains the same. We need better management. I saw today that we are the third fastest-growing county in Florida, and so we need to be prepared for the infrastructure to meet all of these demands. Obviously, more businesses, and I think Dr. Falwell alluded to this, will be going up down 331 South. And there's going to be, with that comes a lot of responsibility. And also, we have the roads and the sidewalks we need to pave, and just different things that we need to work on here. And I also believe that all of us working together is one of the most important things. Democrat, Republican, doesn't matter who you are, if you can't get along and work with each other, then you're just spinning your wheels up there. So really, I just would like for y'all to vote for me, Reed Nolan, City Council, Seat Number 2.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ron Kelly. I love Daphneak Springs. Serving the people of this city has been one of the greatest honors of my life, and we've accomplished so much, yet much remains to be done. That's why I'm seeking a second term as your city councilman. Four years ago, I promised to work to make Daphneak Springs more welcoming and friendly to businesses. I promised to work toward changing the anti-business attitude that had existed at City Hall. I promised to work on reforming or eliminating oppressive regulations that stifled existing businesses. I promised to work toward achieving a leaner, more efficient city government. I promised to protect our landmarks and do everything I could to make this a better place to live, work, and raise a family. And I kept those promises. In 2011, with the help of four other dedicated council members, the council placed a moratorium on impact fees because of their negative impact on attracting new businesses. We invited citizens and local business leaders to help craft a new, less restrictive sign ordinance, which we then passed. For years, the city's high level of spending had forced it to dip into its reserve funds in order to balance the annual budget, and those reserve funds were nearly gone. But the first time in 12 years, we balanced the budget without using reserves, without enacting oppressive fees, and without raising taxes. The benefits of our policies are easy to see. You can drive to almost any section of the city and see it, so they're working. And if you favor me with another term, I'll continue to move forward with those initiatives to make this the best little town in Florida. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca King, and looking out, I see that I know most of you, so I don't have to go into a huge background. I am a Florida Walton County native. Grew up in Walton High School, went to school here, graduated from here, and those of my children have gone to school in Walton County. I have a son who's 20 years old, and I know his gaps, and I get it every time. But he is pride, my pride and joy, and he is the reason that I am running for City Council, Seat 3. I have had the privilege of being in this county my entire life and watching the growth that's gone on in South Walton, in Freeport, in Mosshead. And I really believe that Daphneak can have some of that growth. I'm not saying we need to be South Walton. We're not. I'm not saying that we should. We should. We need to hold on to who we are. Who we are is what made me stay here when I got to be an adult. And if you would give me the opportunity, I do have 20 years of tourism experience, I do have 15 years of management and accounting experience that I believe could work for this city and bring us to where we need to be. So Rebecca King, April 14th, City Council, Seat 3.
Dr. Falwell, pass that down.
Dr. Falwell, real quickly. I'll let you know when in a minute. Third, you have two minutes.
Oh, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Then do yourself.
I'm Dr. Falwell.
Hold the mic up for you.
Oh, okay. I'm Dr. Falwell. I'm a practicing physician and surgeon. I've been in this town for 13 years. We came into the... Are we here?
The mic, we turned it off.
Okay.
You need to start the...
Is it on now? All right, thank you. Okay, yes, time's over. I'm Dr. Falwell. I'm a practicing physician and surgeon in this town. Me and my wife came into this town in 2000 at the end of the year. We've been practicing, I've been practicing since that time here. And like, what good question, why a busy physician like myself should be involved in politics, especially in the city politics? Well, that's a good question, and I'm trying to answer that. Before I took that endeavor, I talked to my wife about it, and she agreed with me anyway. I'm trying to give a little background on myself, and my wife is a southern lady from Mississippi. We've been married for 24 years. Like I said, we moved to Daphneak Springs at the end of 2000. I was using a health mark facility, and then people thought I worked for Health Mark, but really, I'm working for myself. So we moved, we bought an old building on Highway 331, and this old store, we renovated, upgraded, made it better. I'm practicing medicine, I've since that time. 2011 opportunity came in for me, and I bought the next-door business and made the laundromat salon, and that, I improved it, and I think that gives the people opportunities for employment. And if I'm elected to the city council, I would like to bring some of my thought and expertise on this issue when I like. I would hope the city of Daphneak give me the opportunity to be the councilman.
Now leave the mic, leave it turned on.
Now leave the mic turned on.
Earlier, as Brian mentioned, we have a small selection here of questions that were submitted by the audience, and we're going to start out asking Matt Work to answer one of these questions. Again, these questions came from the audience. First question. Should the city fire department be merged with Walton County Fire and Rescue?
Right now, no. Okay, right now, I don't favor that, but in budget times, depending on the money, you may have to entertain, put it on the table and see.
Would you ask the question again?
One more question.
Would you ask the question?
Yes. Again, the question is, should the city fire department be merged with Walton County Fire and Rescue?
I do not feel like that the city fire department should be merged with the county because we, as the citizens, pay our extra taxes and we deserve to have the fire protection readily available to us.
I'm very proud of our fire department. It took a lot of years to get where we are. They worked hard, and they deserved to maintain that integrity. Thank you.
I know I have a formal opinion about the subject because I'm not studying, but if it saved the city and the county money, I'm for it.
Well, they're a separate entity now, and so I don't know what the issues are between them, but I don't see any reason why we shouldn't keep it the way that it is.
I too don't think the citizens would be in favor of that. I like the separation. I think that gives us better response time, for the same reason that I like having a police department as well as the county sheriff. We can use all of those resources, and they all help one another, so I don't see any point in combining them.
Can I just say, me too? No, I don't believe that we should give up our city fire department. We do have a good thing going, we do have the good response time. I've lived in the city for quite a while now, and just knowing that they're close by and that they can get to me if something happened is a great comfort. I would hate to have to think they would come from outside of town to try to get to my house if something happened, and I hope that everyone would agree with that.
Okay. The next question is pertaining to the city sign ordinance. We'll start with Rebecca, so we'll rotate around. We had a strict sign ordinance in the past, and now the sign ordinance seems to be non-existent. Should we continue the ordinance as it is today? Rebecca.
I think I can give a little bit of insight to what we were thinking when the sign ordinance was brought up. Myself and Art and a bunch of other business people were in on that committee meeting. And I really think that when we sat down and we went through it, we were in the haggling mindset. The mindset was, we're going to push it just as far as we can so we can take it back, and if they say no, then we'll have something to come back for. I think that having bad signage is a self-remitting problem. If you have signage that people find offensive, they won't come to your business. So that kind of works itself out. I think that the sign ordinance as it is right now is good. There's nothing wrong with it.
I do listen to businesses for a long time talk to me about how onerous and oppressive that sign ordinance was. It was a top priority when I came in to try to do something about it. We went directly to the people, business people, and private citizens who were on the committee that proposed the new ordinance, which we passed just as they gave it to us. Having said that, I don't know of any ordinance that's absolutely perfect, so it may be that we need to tweak it in the future if we identify a problem that needs addressing, but for now, I don't see any need to make any wholesale changes.
My signs, well, signs can be black, and I've lived in places where they didn't have signs at all. They wouldn't let you have a sign up at your business. We have the invention of the internet now, word of mouth, all kinds of mass communications going on. I mean, I don't know some of the signs, what their code, what the code is exactly, but I mean, sometimes they're just littering the landscape out there, kind of like our political signs.
Well, I have to deal with the sign ordinance when I'm trying to make my business and all kinds of rules and regulations. So I'm not in favor of re-attaining those tools and regulations as restrictive as they were before. I thought it was so sad, Bob Jones would go off with us, but whenever he came to me and wanted to put streamers up in front of his walk cycle, and could not put up a streamer in the sign ordinance stopped him. Whenever the Chevrolet place wanted to put, he didn't put balloons on their cars. I think they were limited to three with all those cars. It was totally silly. Now, we got a workable thing. I just saw the next meeting. I'm on the agenda to bring up, to critique it a little bit. I would like to have it where if a problem sign is pointed out by the public or by us, you know, that it would come to the council, and the council then would, by majority rule, dictate as to if that sign has to be adjusted or even removed. So that would be, that would be the only thing I would change. But I'm very, very happy and I'm very appreciative of our views and all the ones that were on that sign ordinance. Thank you.
Whenever the group, the community and all came together and worked on the sign ordinance, it did need to be tweaked, and they did an awesome job on it. And anytime we ask somebody to sit on the committee, they're giving us their time. And there's always room to tweak any kind of a rule that you have. We had a situation with a sign that really was not very appealing-looking, and it was discussed at one of the council meetings, but there was nothing that could be done about it because it wasn't against the regulations. But everything can be tweaked. We've been away with what we have, but there's always room for improvement also.
I was going to change the sign ordinance. One thing I'd outlawed is blueprints. They are a bunch of trash around the town, and they cost money, and they do a lot more money on radio advertising.
Jane, we're going to start out with you on this next question. The question is, in your opinion, what is the correct balance of city spending on services, infrastructure, and activities, or promotional?
What is...
I'll repeat that. In your opinion, what is the correct balance of city spending on services, infrastructure, and activities such as promotional?
I really don't understand the question because you can't put a budget amount because infrastructure and surfaces such as sidewalks is completely different from when you're talking about your sewer and your water and all your utilities. It's completely different than a surface. To me, a surface is a road.
You were service.
Sorry, Mrs., I'm sorry. I thought you said services.
Services. Speak English.
I speak two languages, English and Spanish. One more time. In your opinion, what is the correct balance of city spending on services, infrastructure, and activities, to include promotional?
The services are what our, what our citizens need. We need to make sure that our citizens' needs and services are taken care of first, whether that be fire, police, and our services are also at our city hall whenever you come in there to see our, come in there to pay your utility bill or whatever. Those are our services. You can't put a price on the services that you get when you walk in and the way you are treated. And the infrastructure, we have to see about getting grants and stuff like that because infrastructure, by working in technology, I know it's astronomical. You can't keep up with the infrastructure. You're behind before you start.
If at any time you need the question repeated to any of the candidates, let me know.
On our new strategic plan initiative, extend our infrastructure rank number three by all of us. So it's very, very important to us, but I agree completely with Jane. Services number one, infrastructure number two. And the funding gains is very necessary, very important, but services first, infrastructure second, and then the...
If I were elected, I would allocate about 40% of the budget for infrastructure, 40% again for the services, meaning fire, police, whatever, and the remaining for promotional. And we have to work within this frame. It might not be exactly dollar figure, but that's our option, four figure.
I guess, correct balance, I mean, sometimes you have to deal with things as they come. I mean, service is, our service to the people is the number-one thing, I think, as, you know, leaders of this town. Our service to the people, and, you know, infrastructure as it comes to us, it will be dealt with. So just saying a correct balance, that's kind of a really tough question to answer because obviously, we'll be dealing with problems as they come to us. And obviously, our first idea is to be a service to the citizens. Thank you.
I'm not sure there is a perfect formula. When you're talking about infrastructure, that's always going to be a high-dollar project. When, when you're discussing paving roads and putting in new water lines and water treatment systems and sewer lines, that's always going to cost a lot. Our services, that's where City Hall interacts with the people mostly, whether it be water or one of our utility services. So those always have to work perfectly or as close to perfect as we can get it. For promotions, from a dollar figure, that may be less, but they're very important, so they have to be a part of the equation. But again, I don't see the perfect formula for that. It sort of dictates its own formula.
I don't know that there is a perfect answer for that. Infrastructure is one of those things that you're, the common public doesn't think about until there's a problem. You expect when you turn on your water, if you paid your water bill, for it to come out. In order to do that, there's a lot of money that has to be spent to keep that going. And service is right there as important as infrastructure. So there is no perfect balance. There's no, I don't think there's a perfect number for that. But if I had to rank them, I would put service and infrastructure on equal footing, and your promotions would come, obviously, below that. It's more important for people to have their water, their sewer, and their service than it is for them to have a promotion.
I think I've got it figured out for y'all. I got an email from Representative Brad Greck, who submitted almost $11 million towards a grant on defending our water system. That takes care of that part. Last year and the year before last, we put in 35 miles of new water lines. We took out the concrete... We took out the concrete asbestos lines. Now, put the word asbestos, what does that cost? So those lines are coming out, new lines with DBC pipe are coming in. I think that's all we want.
We're gonna start with Ron, so if you could pass it down to Ron, and then we're gonna work our way back and then come back to it. But we're trying to keep a balance of who gets stuck with the question first. The next question is, and if Ron, if you could answer it first, is what should the city do about the dilapidated buildings in town?
Okay. For buildings that are on city property, obviously the city can take direct action. When it comes to private property and businesses, or not businesses, but properties and homes that maybe are not occupied or dilapidated and danger of falling down, we have to have a mechanism in place whereby we can address that, get that property owner to make even emergency repairs because we have to look at the safety of folks. You know, people will go in an abandoned building and stay in there and party in there. Sometimes you have to worry about the fire, crime, you know, those things have to be dealt with. So that's going to take an ordinance. And we have begun work on that. We're not through, we're still looking at it, but we will have to have a mechanism in place that gives the city the authority to take action when it comes to those kinds of structures.
Well, I think if it's not cost efficient to fix it, I mean, you gotta go in and do an analyzation and if it has no architectural value whatsoever, then it's gonna have to be torn down.
How would, would it work with citizens or the owner of private owner that tries to fix the problem and like Mr. Ron said, that's a city, city has to take care of it. I don't have any perfect answer for that, but I thought the city already have some ordinance about that. I'm gonna check into that question when I go more into it.
If I understand the question correctly, whenever we have buildings that are condemned by our code enforcement, the city makes all kind of efforts to get them to, to clean it up. The city will go and furnish the dumpsters to help them and all this kind of stuff. But yet, a lot of them still won't do it. We have just taken, moved to, have our attorney, we just passed an ordinance, adjusted a code or whatever, where that the city can go in and remove a dilapidated building and then put the fee that it costs the city onto their taxes, onto the property taxes. So in other words, it's gonna have to be paid. So the way, well, before that, they, there was no way for the city to recoup its money. So I know that over this past four years, I helped with my equipment, torn down three home, houses for folks that did not have the financial means to do it, did charge them a penny. We're, we're here to help anybody if they're faced with this and they need help, all they gotta do is help. Thank you.
If it's a city-owned building, of course, it's the city's responsibility to remove it because we do not want eyesores in our town. But if it's a personal, a person's property, you have to go by the legal regulations and the city just can't step in and take a chance of being sued or spend hundreds of dollars to have something torn down and not ever get the money replaced. So, and I, we do have a new block ordinance that they have just enacted, so we just need to look at it and make sure that we have all the legal rights to be able to do whatever the city can to keep us a very neat, withinable community. Thank you.
Not every answer is gonna suit everybody. You sit down one-on-one and say, you want this property next to you? Your answer is probably not, but it just depends on whose office is getting the order. We have the houses in this town right now, the roof falling in on, the windows are busted out and cracks there used in there. So we're trying to make a valued effort to get something that fit all the needs to be.
Can you read the question for me one more time?
The question was, what should the city do about the dilapidated buildings in town?
I think the easy answer for, for anyone is get rid of it. The problem with that is we live in a rural community and if it's an abandoned house, there should be rules for that. But this is someone's home and a home where my grandmother was raised, the family home. I think you'd have to look at those differently. If it's a business, you have to look at it differently than you do a home. One size fits all is not going to work and you, you kinda have to walk the line. You don't wanna become a homeowner's association where you are getting into what they have to have, but you don't wanna take people's homes away either and leave them with nothing. So one answer isn't going to work for all of that.
The next question, are any, excuse me, any plans to run city services, services such as sewer up 331 North?
I personally would love it. I personally would love to expand the city limits up there, out in Dogwood, Oakwood Hills, up in Juniper Lake. And the residents up there, I probably not gonna give any boogaloo on this comment, but you got fire hydrants by houses out in Oakwood Hills and they're getting reduction on their home insurance, but yet they're not inside the city limits, they're not paying that normal tax. They're getting all the benefits, a lot of the benefits. I personally would love to have sewer run up to Juniper Lake, up to the lot we have up there. So, but it just, it costs money. We've come so far, I'm so proud of where we, how far we've come. And, but that's part of expanding, that's part of growth and that will be our future revenue, so it's very necessary.
If the city has budget to be able to do that, which is formula would ought to be beneficial for both the city and those citizens, then obviously why not? If the city doesn't have the money, I don't know where the money can come. This is gonna be a federal grant or state grant or something to fund this budget. If you can find it, there's more power for them, but if you can't find it, then you might have to put it on hold.
I feel like we need to expand and be prepared for the future because it's gonna, it's coming, people, and we gotta be ready. And just like we should also four lane 331 on up to Paxton now before, you know, the traffic, you can see that getting worse everywhere you go. So also, we do need to add a little benefit to the city. We can produce more revenue, that's, I'm all for it, let's do it.
Ideally, we would love to have sewer service throughout the city. That's sort of a no-brainer, we wanna do that. The only thing keeping us from it is obviously money. It's a high dollar project in order to do that. We do have water service all over the city, but sewer service, we do not. So it's, it's like the other things, we want everything we want and we want it right now. But in the same way that we took steps to balance our budget, instead of doing what this or what government usually does, which is hike up the fees and hike up taxes and keep spending, we tightened our belt. We did without some things, we delayed and we waited. And that's what we're gonna have to do to get the money, you put sewer systems throughout the city. We're gonna have to take our time, do it in phases, seek grants, we may have to seek low-interest loans. We'll have to do whatever it takes. It's not glamorous and it may take a long time, but that's how you do it. You have to take the first steps today and however long it takes, that's how long it takes, but you gotta keep your eye on the ball and the goal out front.
Short answer, yes. Short answer to the question is yes. Realistically planning, you have to have a plan, you have to move forward with that plan. And budgets for cities are just like my budget, my home budget. If it's not there, you can't spend it. So you have to work up to it. You have to start small and grow. So short answer, yes, baby steps.
Realistically, if you're gonna expand sewer, you need to get Washington DC printing rights. It's not cheap, folks. If you're gonna go outside the city limits, try to expand stuff, then you need to assess those property owners for that benefit. But I'm not in favor of expanding sewer, not outside the city limits.
I've attended the council meetings for the past about four years and there's been nothing brought up about expanding the sewer, the utilities and sewers on up 331. Yes, it would be a great idea, but there again, they are very, very expensive and we just can't, we don't have the money financially and the ones that are gonna pay for it, if we expand, it's gonna be us the citizens and we just don't have money. I know with my budget, I can't afford any more expenses and it can't even be the citizen in this ring. So we just have to plan for the future. When we get our five-year growth plan, maybe we can, see where we can go with it. But until then, no money, no extra utilities. Thank you.
If you could pass it to Mr. Nolan, the next question, we'll start with him. Next question is, are we borrowing from our grandchildren by not collecting impact fees?
That's a good question. I feel like anytime you go into, by not collecting those impact fees, yes, we are borrowing from our grandchildren. We should be collecting those fees. I know I've heard that that's the, we're not attracting business by waiving those impact fees, but the, I mean, places like Taco Bell and they're gonna, they were gonna pay the impact fees no matter what. I don't think that that was gonna stop them from coming to town. That's a part of their apparatus modi is to pay those impact fees when they relocate anywhere because that's just what they do. And so I believe that we should keep the impact fees.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a like to follow the model of New York State. New York State, now if you move from anywhere in the United States to New York State, the first ten years, no taxes. And I think the ten years is too much for the city. I would say five years waive those and after that start charging. New York State has how it touch business. If you go live in a city called Niagara Falls, New York, they pay you twenty thousand dollars to go. Why? Because one people, one business. So you have to give and take. Give them, not give them forever no impact fee, but give them like five years with no impact fee and then after that, you have to charge it or make up for it.
Impact fees are, it's two separate ways to look at it. Whenever I look at it in the way, way it actually is, if it's charged and collected in a designated geographical area, guess where it can only be spent? If it's collected down by McDonald's, can it be spent up on 83? It's gotta be spent in, right in the area. It's gotta be spent in the area that it's collected in. So you can have ten million dollars in impact fees that you've collected and not be able to spend it. If we can get, I know we got Taco, Taco Bell came in, maybe they would come in anyway, but whenever Henry Ennis at our last meeting told about the, what's the name of that private chicken place? Zaxby's. Zaxby's did not come to Crestview because of impact fees. Whenever they were removed, they came in. If, if we can get the businesses to come, man, let's do whatever we can because everyone that we get in here, thank the Lord, you know, that's jobs. Thank you.
I feel like we should have our impact fees back because we're gonna grow down 331 South. Well, 331 South is where we need more utilities, that's where we need the sewer line, that's where we need the water. Well, we, we that live here in such, close right here are the ones that are gonna have to pay for that infrastructure that's not out there if we don't have it. And the businesses, you know, the fact that we miss, that fees wouldn't go to Crestview. Well, you know, Zaxby's is a minimum wage business. Yes, we need jobs. Yes, we need for our people to be able to stay here. So we need, we need jobs to come here that you can support your family off of. Minimum wage jobs, I couldn't, I couldn't support myself on a minimum wage job, but yes, I am for the impact fees.
Let me correct one thing that Nolan said. He said Taco Bell did not come. Is that right?
No, I have to say, I have to look back at the tape, I'm not sure.
Okay. Taco Bell is the only business that took advantage of the waiver of fee. That's all. Now, folks, there's thirty-nine new businesses in this town right now. The dental school is gonna make the twenties. I want everybody to come down to Oak, to Grand Oak. But Taco Bell is the only one, when they got a copy of the DeKinnier Carol from Bruce Taylor that wrote for them, said it had been waived, that's when they decided to come. Now, that's the only business that done that. The rest of them went into pretty existing places that already impact fees had been paid off. But I'm now in favor of having impact fees because it's on the impacted area. Did somebody's wants to pay to expand? Do you go? Now, we got sewer all the way down to Lake, uh, Hostel, so water and sewer, we got that far down 331, down that outside city, but they paid to get it run.
As I understand it, we, we did just do a moratorium on impact fees for the next year, so not a whole lot we can do in the next year. I do believe that we should have our impact fees back. We will have to grow, we will have to move, we will have to change and we can't do that on the budget that we have right now without going into the red. Budget is key and without that money, our budget's going to be leaner and leaner for the things that we need to do. So in the future, yes, I believe we should have our impact.
I think everybody knows that I do not favor impact fees and a couple of reasons for that. The most compelling is that while Mac is, or maybe correct, that Taco Bell is the only one who's taking advantage of it, what he didn't quite finish saying was, it may be the only one who's taking advantage of it so far. I'm sure we'll have other businesses that want to come here and you can only collect impact fees from companies that come in and build new facilities from the ground up. That's what we mean when you, you go into an existing building, you're not eligible to, to have to pay those impact fees. When I look to our east and west, I see communities and cities that are doing everything they can to attract every company and business they can. And so when I consider the idea of using impact fees, then that puts us at a disadvantage at the very time we need to be doing everything we can to attract businesses. Second, the impact fees are not, whether we charge them or not, consider how much we've accomplished without impact fees. Nobody's water rates have gone up and neither have their taxes. So if we have a robust economy, lots of businesses, we don't need impact fees. So, if we have a robust economy, lots of businesses, we don't need impact fees.
Okay. Due to time constraints, we have time for one more question because we'll take a quick break after, and then we're going to do the city marshal candidate. So, this will be the last question. If I did not get to a question, I apologize. I got to most of them, but there are a couple that I was not able to get to. But the last question, we're going to start with Kermit, trying to balance this out. Question is, do you think the city limits should expand? And if so, what direction?
They've already covered that, or what? Is there anybody, any doubt anybody in mind how I feel on that subject? I think that it needs to expand in all directions. Just look around. Go to Geneva, Alabama. Come from Dope, come, come to the DePina. Get to the city limits sign in Geneva, okay? Hold your breath till you go out to city limits on the other side. There's a long way. I mean, it is a long way. They are ready for progress. We, you know, our council, we've got five guys up there, and they all have different ideas. I'm for expanding our city limits. I'm for getting our numbers up so that whenever an industry is looking, coming here, I want, instead of 6,400 people, I want it to be 75. I want it to be, I want, I want it to be well up there. And I think that can be accomplished by simply expanding our city limits. You know, you can't do it if they don't want to be in there. You know, you can't force them to come in.
Yes, I also think that we need to expand our city limits because if we don't expand our city limits, we're never going to get our population. And the population numbers is what makes a lot of difference whether or not a business decides to come into your community. And for those of you who haven't gotten, gotten out in psychology, you're not real sure where the city limits are at, and whether this house is in city or not. So, you just knock on them and tell them you're just glad to see them. Yes, I think we need to expand so we can get a higher population.
Kermit and I have butted heads over this annexation. The problem with that is, we tried to do 331 South. You get first property owner, they say yes, I want in. All right. You go to the second property owner, yes. Third one says no, that's stopped. It's right there, only two to come in. Now, that's the reality. It's got to be voluntary. It's got to be contiguous. Now, if you go outside the city limits and annex property, what you're going to have to provide? Water, sewer, gas, everything you got to go do. And in trying to get businesses to come to this town, I ran into that when I called Parker Barrel. They wouldn't know our population, and they lacked it. So, I said, there's another way to skin this cat. I went to the GIS department, the county commissioners. I said, what is the population of North Walton County? They told me. So, when I called now, they said, well, how big is your population? I said, well, simply located in North Walton County with a population of 36,000, and that's no lie. So, you get a return call. Now, you know, I don't mind annexing, but Juniper Lake should be the place where you can go. There's more population up there. And then you already got water there. The only thing you like is sewer. And take the luck where you get a grant, put in sewer, keep, take the thing, leasing down, and where you get to teach your grand from.
I'm going to have to agree with Janie on this. Getting out and talking to people and going down the street and knocking on the door and introducing yourself and saying, hey, I'm running for city council seat three. I don't live in the city. But across the road, they do. Or two houses up, they do. And, and if you look at the, the city boundary lines, it's anybody's guess. I believe that we should. I, I've talked to people quite extensively about expanding the city limits of, of DePina because we do have water in some places. We don't have sewer in all places, but we do have water in some places. So, that would be less of an expense. It needs to be done. And, and I agree with Mac on his, we're in north central, centrally located in North Walton County with a population of, but then the next question's going to be, okay, well, how many people does the city of DePina have? And then you have to backtrack off of that. So, you have to be careful.
I think Mac and I are in agreement on this. Ideally, I'd love to draw a big circle and just declare all of that to be the city of DePina Springs. But when I talk to people, first thing they say is, I don't want to pay city taxes. I like having my well. You know, I like not being in the city limits, but being able to enjoy all the amenities of nearby city life. I understand that, and it really does have to be voluntary. However, I don't think the geographical size of our city is the deciding factor when businesses are considering to come here. As Mac says, if you tell them just how many people they can expect to draw from, if you, you can explain that, A, a 10-mile radius or a 15-mile radius will bring you thousands of potential employees. There are ways around those questions and those problems. So, until people want to be annexed, I'm not in favor of forcing. I think we'd have to leave town as soon as we try to.
I'm going to agree with him on that. People don't want to pay more taxes in general. I've never heard a lot of people, well, there have been instances where we do, but this is going to surprise a lot of y'all, but I don't know all the answers. But I am willing to listen to the people, and I will do what the people want me to do, and I'll do what I think's best for the city of DePina Springs.
From what I gather and what I see in the city, yes, I'm favorable of the theory expanded city limits. However, a practicality like Mac said, sometimes people don't want it. You can force it on them as a free country, and whatever practical, if it's practical to annex 83 or the Juniper Lake, and feasible, you have to tell the people, yes, you're going to pay more taxes, but yes, you're going to get more amenity. Nothing for free in the world. You pay taxes, they serve, if you don't waste them, they serve you. And that's the way to do it. So, there's no direction, whatever is practical, I'm for it.
Okay. This will wrap up our question and answer session with the city council candidates. And now, we're going to give each candidate a minute or so to add a closing statement. And since we've opened up on this side, if we could, pass it down. I thought we were back on on our closing statements. Thank you.
I'm going to get to close. I'm good at this one. You know, we don't have all of the answers, and I don't think that one person can have all of the answers. We have our ideas, and we have our thoughts, and, and we want to do what's best for this town. And I don't think anybody up here will say differently than that. We love DePina Springs. We love the businesses of DePina Springs. We love the people of DePina Springs. If we didn't, we wouldn't be here. So, we try, and we come up with ideas that we think will work, but we don't have all of the, the answers. So, that is my closing. We will do our best. My name is Rebecca King, April 14.
I talk a lot about being business-friendly and welcoming new businesses and helping existing businesses because that's what creates a strong economy. That's what create lot, creates lots of jobs and gives our local consumers more choices. But as I said this morning, I have no desire to transform DePina Springs into anything other than what it is, a wonderful, friendly, small southern town. Having said that, we do have to prepare. We have to plan for the growth. We can't sit back and just wait and see who comes to town. We need to identify the kinds of businesses and services and amenities we want, and then try to actively recruit them. And if I'm given another chance to serve you, that's exactly what I intend to do. So, on April 14th, please vote Ron Kellner. Thank you.
I was looking back at some old issues that happened throughout time. My granddaddy was on the city council, and I was looking at some of his cards, and some of the same issues that they talked about then are some of the same issues that we face today. It seems that we're pretty much looking at, we need new streets, we need new sidewalks, we want to get rid of the blighted buildings, we want better accounting procedures, we want to have more transparency in government. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we can do to improve. And if you'll elect me, anyone can come to me anytime. I'll listen to what anyone has to say. My thoughts aren't etched in stone. And someone, if they have a logical explanation or a logical reasoning, then I will listen to them, and I'll take that consideration, and I'll make the best decision I can for y'all. Please vote for me, April 14th.
Obviously, you understood that I don't have the answer to all the questions that we pulled. I'm new to that, and I don't know whether I, I hope I'm going to win because I have a good feeling about it from the people who talk to me. If I go, if I get elected, I want to bring all my best thought. Like Ron, I have the idea of bringing the businesses to this town, whatever, with any way you can help them, help the city to come in, I mean, the businesses to come into the city, to be for everybody. And I hope to make some change, and hopefully, people give me the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Whenever I introduce myself, I'll go, I left out the most important person in my life. And that's my wife for 40, almost 48 years. I thank her for supporting me this past four years, and I thank her for agreeing to let me run again. And to say I enjoyed the last four years, yes, I did. It's hard. It is hard. And if you go home, and you have voted on something, and it eats at you, did I make the right decision? What is this, what is this decision going to do for our citizens down the road? Lot, a lot of decisions we make are, I mean, they're gut-wrenching. They're, they're tough. But each one of us come from different backgrounds, and we, we offer what we offer. Please consider me. I'll work hard for you as I have in the past. Thank you.
In closing, I would just like to thank you everyone once again for coming out and being with us tonight. And I just want you to know if I'm elected, I will be accessible. Even though I work full-time, I can be reached by text or email anytime, and I guarantee I will respond promptly and do everything in my power to meet your needs. I will work tirelessly as your city council member. Those who know me will confirm that I complete a task when I take it on. You can count on the job being done to its conclusion in a professional manner and with respect and integrity. If elected, I will complete my terms unless God deems otherwise. I won't jump ship in two years because I'm interested in higher offices. Please vote for me, Janie Rippon, on April 14th. Thank you.
Four years ago, one of my platforms worked, term limits. Well, I was going to tail end on a one-to-four vote again. So, I believe in term limits. If I get real elected, that's going to be my last one. I'm going to the house and retire, but not on the city council cell. We get the passage too many in city, or city, chief. We have 39 new or expanded businesses, 214 new jobs, $10 million in our economy because of the 214 cities. Little school up, made it 20, and around 35 new jobs, and a little higher class. 35 mile new water lines, Lake Vess Festival, 5,000 foot runway, airport, ten new containers airport, North 20th Street fade and sidewalk on 20th Street with 1,000 fifteen. New park next to Weaker Park, 28. Developed 40 acre industrial park at airport, and it's getting certified with Gulf Power as ready. Five new businesses downtown, three businesses sold and been renovated downtown. We have a ballot place for the first time since 1998, and that's 15 years. Hiring freedom's still in effect and live streaming with council meetings. The council meetings will be in the ballot about 15 minutes. I don't need live chat with people.
I'd like to say, thank all of you candidates for coming out and speaking to the public. We certainly appreciate it. If we could give you guys a round of applause. Thank you. Before you guys go, we want to get you guys to line up, and we're going to take a picture. And then we're going to take about a five-minute break, and then we'll bring the city marshal candidates.